I want to call the mean to order for the board of selectmen Monday, November 17, 2014. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in this pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that our Governor DeWalt Patrick ordered the flags at half-staff on November 8th in honor of Petty Officer First Class Richard Charles Tucker II, 38, United States Navy of Southeastern, who died on October 26, 2014. Thank you. The agenda for tonight, in a couple minutes, we'll have input from the public and the members before that will read the mail. 7:15 around that time, special town meeting recap of the tax, the TIF agreement for three distribution sent a circle, followed by recap of the joint fiscal year 2016 budget review with FinCom departments and departments. 7:45, Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator Finance and Budget, their part for the approval and appointment of a tax collector and staffing vacancy review for Highlight Park's working format. Around 8 o'clock, the Personnel Board has put an awful lot of work on the policy and procedures for hiring and policy guidance document will be going through that and other business after that. Keith, you want to do the mail?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. In the mail packet, first is a notice that we received regarding the affordable housing, affordable rental housing lottery for Village Green. That's the 15 Great Road rental project. There will, there's information available on the website, but the lottery itself will be held in January, the 28th, and there's a public information session which will be held on Wednesday, December 10th at 6:00 PM, Room 307. The consultant assures me that that room is large enough. We thought it might, he might need bigger digs, but he thinks it'll, it'll be enough. There are 34 rental, affordable rental units that will be available through the lottery. Information about what the income levels are, what the rents are that would be charged and so forth, they're all available online, but it's sort of what we've been working towards in having affordable housing being constructed in town now that housing is becoming available. So if there are any questions about that process, the folks can find the information online and if not, contact our office and we'll help them, help them find it. Next is, we've got the chief here, and I've included in the packet, the press release that went out last week for both the police and fire departments, which, which called to our attention and rightfully so, some excellent work done by police and fire in saving a, an overdose patient with nasal Narcan, and that was great to read about that, what was done. Hats off to the two departments, to the deputy, to the fire deputy, Tom Clancy in particular, who administered, but it's great work all around. We really appreciate the, the efforts of our public safety departments.
One quick question for you, Chief. Did, was the individual in a vehicle? Were they on their way to the hospital or?
Well, the driver pulled into the PD because he realized his partner, you know, was in trouble.
They were using somewhere and then just happened to go in the police station.
Coming up more of the class.
May I ask it before too many more meetings go by, perhaps between Chief of Fire and Chief of Police, maybe talk to us a little bit about the drug abuse in town and some of things that are going on. There's in the note, when you mentioned that eight recently, that's certainly, certainly we've been involved with the schools when I was on school committee at concern level and knew there were issues, but eight of that one particular type of OD really caught my attention. So if that's something we could schedule, I'd appreciate it.
Next, we have a, I had seen these previously, but I wanted to call them to your attention tonight. We have a request from the Groton Board of Selectmen. They want to perambulate with you.
Good point. Go ahead.
It's, I happen to see-
That was funny.
Joe says that he remembers perambulating in the 80s.
1980s.
It's an ancient ritual where boards of selectmen, since colonial times, have been required to walk the boundaries of their town with their adjoining boards of selectmen at least every five years. I found a reference to online with, to a perambulation that Littleton and Acton did in 1744, and so if we could just check and see-
Were you with that? It's a little bit longer than five years.
But I happened to see one of the selectmen from Groton this morning at a, at that meeting of communities concerned about the Kinder Morgan pipeline, and, and asked if there was any particular impetus behind the request. No, they're just, they hadn't done one in seven or eight years themselves, so they wanted to just reinstitute the practice. If we wanted to do, if, if we wanted to fully comply with the requirement, we've got to do more than Groton. We've got a few other towns to include in, in the loop, and if you, if you do, if you do enjoy the Groton experience, then we can invite air and, and Westford and Acton and-
Boxborough.
Boxborough and Harvard for similar times. The, the selectmen from Groton suggested this time of year, you might want to wear orange if it's hunting season. Selectmen are never not in season, though, but, but that, or just schedule it for warmer times. So when, my first-
Are you applying, we're marked into the-
No. It took me a while to even discover this practice of perambulation. My first job was on Nantucket, and we didn't actually have anyone to perambulate with.
You knew your boundaries.
We knew our boundaries, although, you know, it was between us and the sea. But in any event, it was, it's, the request is made in good, good spirits, and we can, if you're interested, we can work out something. It does not require the full board, just a couple of members and-
I've got no shoes, I'm good.
We can pursue that.
Didn't the notes say, or designate?
Great orange. I have hunting gear too, yes.
Or does, or, or selectmen, or they're designee, you mean, or they're, you know?
Or the town administrator.
I've avoided it up till now. We'll, we'll see. In just, we, we did get an official document today, which I wanted to share and which we can discuss later. The Attorney General's Office issued, belated and if wordy, approval of the preference bylaw that was passed-
Oh, good.
By the annual town meeting in May. We got the, we got the written approval today. I think she was busy and had asked for a delay on some of the bylaw reviews until after, after, later in November. So we got the approval now, and so we have that as a record. And I also wanted to mention a letter that you've received previously. We have a request from the Littleton Children's Fund expressing interest in funding for the upgraded playground equipment that they've talked to us before about. Some potential funding sources that we've discussed include mitigation funds, depending upon what policy decisions you make, and also the, the ability, as we've discussed here before, that if any private fundraising was done, that, especially for a project like recreation, but it would also apply to open space. If there's a, if there's fundraising being done for a project that qualifies for CPA funding, not to reopen a wound, we're going to be proactive and, and get it done, get it done the right way. But that ideally, if there are funds available for a particular project for which CPA funds could be spent, we would have the unique ability to accept private funds and deposit them in the CPA fund and have them increase the funds that could go towards a particular project. And this year, the reimbursement rate was 31%. So for every dollar you put in, you get another 31 cents back, which is an excellent investment. And so it's something for us to, to keep on our radar screen as we go forward with, with discussions. And the other thing I would mention, just about a recreational project in particular, we have, we're currently going through a planning process. The open space and recreation plan is being updated by the committee of that name, and that is a policy guidance document that not only indicates what our priorities should be for open space, but also for recreation needs. So that's another, you know, policy document that we could be making sure that all the, that recreation as well as open space needs are addressed.
When's that being, when's it going to be completed?
It's supposed to, it, our target is this winter. I mean, we, we do want to make sure that it gets in and approved in, by, by February or March if we can, because we would want to, we would want to be able to apply for funding in the next funding round next summer. So we're, we are motivated to get that-
And all those pieces have to be part of the master plan anyways.
Yeah.
Okay, public input. Does anyone have public input? Please identify yourself.
I'm Diane Corey. I'm here this evening as your town clerk. Mr. Chairman, I ask the opportunity to address two different items, if I may.
Yes.
Both items are in response to questions that were asked of me as town clerk. First, I was asked regarding something that happened at town meeting in which town moderator stated that the clerk's office was not prepared to do a ballot and checklist. I want everyone to know that the clerk's office was actually prepared, if it was necessary, to hold a ballot and checklist vote. It was not set up, but we had all the materials available for it, and if we were required, we would have had it set up. Bylaw does not require that we take that kind of vote unless it's for borrowing. For those of you that are questioning it, this is why we didn't have it set up. Secondly, I would like to address the allegations that have been made by persons who will not say it to our selectman Hebert's face directly, but choose to say it on social media. Unethical is what they have called her. When you're an elected official, especially in the position of selectman, it is their duty and your duty to inform the public, to enable them to make an informed decision, no matter what form they use. The fact that selectman Hebert did a video does not violate any ethics law. She at no time during that video asked the voters to vote one way or another. She asked the voters to make an informed decision. She had nothing to gain by doing this video except to make better informed voters by asking them to have a voice and be heard in come to town meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else have some public input? Okay, the board. Paul, you have any?
Yes. Can I pop those pitches up?
Yep.
We'll start with the signs.
That's a nice blank screen.
It's a black sign. There.
Folks that have driven by on King Street can see that we have new town office signs. The next one, we'll show it actually up.
There it is.
It's a very classy and it looks wonderful befitting of our town, so weld on to all the folks who are involved in replacing the old sign and getting this new one up.
I saw the guys arriving with the sign. I just ran out. Captured the moment.
And next, this is a conjunction with Rotary Club of Littleton, the Legacy Subcommittee of the 300th Committee, a clock. It had been a Friendly's clock, friendly restaurant. A gentleman town, Dave Erickson of Erickson Stoves, about three years ago, routing around in various other person's junk, our treasure now, as you can see, so the cliche holds well, and rehabbed it and with the help of Light and Power, Savestanos and others in the LELD, got the power out there and it's now up. And soon, around it will be roughly a 20-foot by, 20-foot diameter octagon's shape patio that will also go around it, using puzzle rock for it. And eventually, once, and that's funded, once we get a little more funding through the 300th Committee, we'll actually be putting some benches out there also. So that's a legacy Subcommittee project, along with Littleton Rotary Club. So thanks much.
Anything else, Paul?
No, sir, thanks.
Big win for the high school football team Friday. Another big game coming up this week. If you can get out, get out and watch the game. Kids are doing great.
Just a quick one for me. I'd like to thank town clerk very much for clearing up both of those matters and having the courage to come out and, you know, set the record straight here in a proper venue. So thank you very much. You really encapsulated my intentions correctly to inform the voters, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do apologize. Jim bringing up the football game reminds me of Thanksgiving morning, Rotary breakfast at the middle school before the football game. Thank you.
Anything else, Paul? Seeing that, we'll move on. Town meeting weekend?
Keith, you want? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just do a couple of things in this agenda item. First is to share with you, there's a, just a tracking sheet of follow-up actions for the, for the articles that were passed. We're taking just one item tonight in following up regarding Article 8 for the, for the tax income and financing agreement, but there'll be other things that we'll be doing in the near future. And just to sort of run through those, and master plan update, we've only, we've got a master plan update steering committee jointly appointed with the planning board, 12 members. We've only, we've only got two applications thus far for the four citizen-at-large positions we've advertised now for twice for, for two months. We have two, two applications. We still don't have that many applications in from town boards. You recall, we had, of the 12 positions, four would be from, two each from selectmen and planning board, another four from town boards whose, whose work deals with an element of the master plan, and then four citizens-at-large. So I think we still need to do some, if we're going to go forward in that format with the committee, we're going to need some more folks to serve.
We haven't made that one yet either.
No.
We should probably take that up very shortly. I mean, the planning board has it. We're, we're co-chairs, so to speak, of this whole project, so. Briefly talked about, but a big enough choice.
Yeah, so, so that'll, that'll be one thing. The Elder in Human Services Needs Assessment we'll schedule for our next meeting. There's a, a contract for, for $35,000 to award for that. Fuel facility placement, I know Bonnie and council are reviewing the bids and we hope to bring that forward at a, at a future meeting. We had hoped that it would be ready for tonight, but it's not. The TIF agreement tonight, we'll, we'll be discussing next. We have already notified the town of Boxborough that we're extending our animal control officer intermunicipal agreement through the end of the fiscal year. There are four bylaws that were approved by town meeting. Those are all subject to further approval by the Attorney General before taking, in fact, so those, those will be in the works to go, to get submitted to the AG before they're, before they're approved ultimately. And then on the road acceptance says town council will be preparing the form of, the, the next step is an order of taking for that which we've already taken, but we have to procedurally go through the, that procedure, and we'll bring the form of that vote to your, to your next meeting. There are, there were a number of themes, I think, that the meeting had, and we don't need to get into a big discussion about them tonight, but I thought while it was fresh in our mind, it would be well worth just, just mentioning what, what maybe some of the follow-up work is that we have from last week's town meeting, even, even on things that didn't, didn't pass or on sort of unfinished business. But thematically, I think that we recognize that there's the continuing need to, to work on better integrating community preservation funding into our overall fiscal approach. The, the staff has met with the finance committee, they've met with the community preservation committee. They're ready to go with, with launching a, a working group between those two committees and the board of selectmen to figure out how to do that, how to try to address some, come up with some policies that would, that would maybe have us call for adopting a joint long-range master plan on how the, the funds should be used, having financial policies that say what the rules are for, for requesting the funds, and, and, and getting at the issue of, of policy and guidelines regarding how, how funds might be put into the community preservation fund to increase the base for the state match. I think there's the need to have some procedures in place so that we, so that we know what the rules of engagement are. A lot of these issues that we're talking about, though, are squarely financial policies, that they're, you know, basic financial policy things. And, and so it would seem like in order to start to proceed with this, the discussion, you can either set up yet another working group, which you could do with members from selectmen, FinCom and CPC, or you could recognize that we have a working group on financial policy stuff already, and why don't we just invite the CPC to have some designees working with that group specifically on those policy matters that pertain to CPC? We've already got a system in place. I think if we add CPC to that discussion, that we'll, we'll be able to make some progress, and we won't fall into the trap that in fact, the financial policies group, I think fundamentally has the, we already, we fundamentally tasked them to, to deal with financial policy matters, and this is, this is one. It's one that necessarily has to involve another group, the community preservation committee, but I think it would be well to, you know, to figure out where the discussion takes place. And my, my suggestion would be that we assign it to the, to the financial policies working group with an addition, just for that task of, of community preservation to, to work on it. As I say, FinCom's bought on to the idea of having that kind of a working group. The community preservation committee is, is, is ready to participate as well. The Community Preservation Committee is, is, is ready to participate as well. And the goal is that we have, that we all be on the same wavelength by the time we get to a future town meeting.
I think it's a great, great idea where Paul and I are sitting on that financial group. My only issue would be, is that we have enough on the CPA Act itself, so we know our limitations as far as developing policy that may be in conflict with the actual law, so.
Yeah, I think we can do that. And as I mentioned when we had a brief conversation at the Finance Committee meeting on Saturday, I think that when you consider the, the dimensions of the funds we're talking about, especially with additional funds to increase the base of the state match, that the, at some level, the CPA becomes almost a junior partner in the discussion. And I mean that with all respect, but if, if the CPA funds are equal to 1% of the, 1% surcharge, $200,000, yet we have the ability to add in another $400,000 and another 2% per year in order to maximize funds for the state match, but all, all $600,000 have to come out through the CPC, that whether the 400 ever goes in is, is the, is the town's decision. And I think that, I think that therefore the town, the community as a whole has some skin in the game, that they have, they have these funds which, which town meeting could choose to have go elsewhere. And, and that if there, but if there's a business decision made that, well, you know what, to get 31 cents on the dollar, maybe we ought to figure out how to maximize putting it in the CPC. Yes, and we can certainly address the issues of what does the law say, because there are some strictures there. But I think it would be very important to have the, if, if the CPC and the Selectmen and the Finance Committee jointly adopt policy goals, then I think, I think we'll be on a firm footing. And I think that the key will be, by the time we bring a project to town meeting, that rather than two separate articles, I, I think we'd want to have joint sponsorship of money going in and money coming out in the same, in the same article, in the same act. So there's no disconnect of that.
And we do have the Financial Plans and Policy Meeting tomorrow evening here. And certainly, we could introduce it to get the ball rolling. And even if statutorily, it's a CPC policy between the, this FinCom and Board of Selectmen Joint Committee or our Joint Working Group. There's experience and there's background and there's expertise on the FinCom side to bring forward. And as Keith has said, CPCs already committed themselves to wanting to work through this. So, yeah, this will work out plenty fine.
I do have one concern about, I guess it's concern or caution or whatever, but when this was originally established, the CPC was given by law, a great deal of latitude separate from the town in managing the tax surcharge dollars. And where it gets a little tricky is that we're now putting into the fund to get matching state dollars and we have an expectation that, we should agree that the money that we're putting in above and beyond the surcharge will be used in a manner that, you know, we all see, have the same vision for. But I think we have to be very careful not to annex the CPC to such a degree that they don't have that level of autonomy that, that they have had. And, and that we don't use it as simply an extension of our budgetary process. And I think, I think we have to be very careful of that, otherwise the whole separation ceases to exist. And I think it's an important part of a check and balance and system that, that legislature and whatever wisdom it was using at the time put there for us, and we need to honor that.
I would offer this actually an excellent opportunity to get our stove piping, where each committee and board in the town does its own thing all by itself, because it sees its statutory requirements and regulations and just follows that in a straight and narrow course. That doesn't do the town any good. Working together and bringing and integrating the various roles and responsibilities each board and committee has, and working through that, and this is providing, my thought, an excellent opportunity. The CPC has its statutory regulations. The school committee has its. Yet we figured out a way to work well with the school committee, between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. I think similarly, and this is just something that's been on an epistemic curve here recently, if you think about it, it wasn't until two town meetings ago, in other words, six and a half months ago, that it really percolated to be an issue as to how CPC was having money. As they've said more than once, they couldn't give the money away. Well, now there's a gold rush, because people are understanding that the money is there and they have the opportunity to provide it. So working very jointly between the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, and the CPC actually makes perfect sense, I should think. And I'm very committed to working it that way and not excluding it. Let's keep your stovepipe, we'll keep our stovepipe. That's only going to harm us. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for good here, Alex.
I don't think that's at all what I was saying. I think that's a mischaracterization of what I was just saying. Statutorily, even Jim brought it up, the law has created that separation. We must honor that separation. There are cases where we're going to have to work together with them and we should understand each other, because we saw an example of misunderstanding didn't do us any good. But I, I think we have to be careful not to say, I mean, working cooperatively is different than working under or for or having, when you hear, when you hear a term like junior partner, you have to worry about that. Well, you know, what are we going to do with junior? You know, they're, they are a separate board and they have to have the autonomy to the degree that they need to. And that we have to work together where we need to work together and where we take town funds and plug it into that account, that's absolutely a place that we need to work together. And they need to establish policies and regulations and rules for their own purposes, but they do not have to become an arm of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't think that's the case. I think what's important, and that's why the Board of Selectmen, the CPC, and the FinCom get together and make the policies, because if it's handled properly, you're not going to be touching any of the funds that they normally have in there for things that, that they might want to put money toward, because that'll be there, plus the extra money that the town will, will get by putting the money in there. But at the same time, I think we have to be careful that if we have funds available that we're putting in, that we're putting it in there to gain money for the town, we have to have a way to assure ourselves that the money that we put in there for a specific, specific reason can be drawn out.
I agree.
Yeah, so the, the money's that are put there, that are CPC funds, I don't think anyone wants to take out, that's still there.
It's always going to be there.
Yeah, and I, and I think the process recognizes what we do already now in financial planning with the Selectmen, School Committee, and Finance Committee, where everyone has their, the authority that they have, but we are committed to essentially reaching, you know, coming to a common understanding of what, of what the right answer is, so it doesn't, so we don't have to get into, well, is it, you know, no one's saying the school committee doesn't have the, the authority to, to spend its money the way they want to, but we come to an agreement about, and they have the right to ask for whatever budget they want, but we, we come, we work hard to come to an agreement that the amount that they're asking for is the amount that the Selectmen and Finance Committee are able to recommend. That's where, that's all we want to accomplish with, with the CPC.
And that's a great example of two units of government that are, that are distinctly separate in their powers under the state law, where they have to work together. But no, no, one does not overshadow the other.
I think that, you know, the, the fact that this, and it's the right thing to do for the town, period. You can, you can say anything you want. By, by depositing extra funds into the CPC or the, under the CPA law, the town's getting more money, you know? Whether we, whatever bucket we put it in, whether it's the housing bucket, whether it's the open space, recreation, and what's the other one? Number four?
Historical.
Historical. Those four buckets in that CPC that the CPC is responsible for, it's the right thing to do. You know, the town's getting $31,000 for $100,000. How can, you know, you don't get that, depositing money in your savings account nowadays, that's for sure.
No, and actually by, you know, coming down the litany of the four areas where they can work together, each of the various boards that have responsibility in that area in town, working together with the CPC makes good sense.
Absolutely.
In addition to just the Board of Selectmen. I think perhaps we're in violent agreement on this one. It's just maybe a couple of, you use some terms, I use some terms, we're probably saying the same thing, Alex. Certainly caution is advised and working together with them makes perfect sense.
Developing a policy that's not in conflict with the CPA law should be able to work out, no problem.
And so we'll assign that to the, to the Financial Policies Working Group and invite CPC to have, add a couple of members to that group for the, for the duration of this task, for the purpose of this task. So we'll follow that up.
Because that group, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that group is just a reviewing, that's all we're doing.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a deciding group.
All we're doing is reviewing and fine tuning, and that's it, so.
Anything else you want to mention as far as?
Just in, in, on the matter of economic development, tax increment financing, because we, and, you know, the, the, those who raised the point last week were absolutely correct. Every time a tax increment financing agreement comes up, we don't have a written policy and we say that we'll have one. And I, so just as a reminder that we work on developing one, my suggestion would be that staff work with the Economic Development Committee if the board, unless the board thinks it would belong someplace else, on a, on a proposed, on a proposed policy for the future, and have this board specifically assign it to the EDC and the staff will work, be happy to work.
I think we'd be ready to.
It's a perfect fit.
So we'll, we'll do that as well. And lastly, on recreation, just to reiterate the point I made earlier, that there are other master planning processes going on right now to address recreation needs. The Open Space and Recreation Plan is, is but one of them, but I think we'll probably want to engage specifically in some discussions about how do we, I mean, we made one decision last week about, at town meeting, but we didn't solve the issue of what do we do about, about the need for recreational fields in Littleton. That issue remains, and as, that didn't get resolved last week, so.
Well, what we did do is we opened up a dialogue that we now must continue. And put it into the plan and worked it.
So that, okay, moving on then, tax? Yeah, for 3A, the Tax Increment Financing Agreement. We're looking for an authorizing, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I just want to point out to people who, this is, this has been worked on for weeks and weeks and weeks, as there's people have put a tremendous amount of time into this, going back and forth with Pope Parry. And even today, I thought I had the copy all set to go, that like 2:00 printed it out to find out that like two more went, went by us at 5:30. So I just want to thank all the people, the finance team, and Jim has worked on it. I've been to some of the meetings, but all the people that have worked on this, it's not something that's, that's simple, it takes time, and hopefully we have something that'll work for both, be beneficial to the town and for Pope Parry.
You bet. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The fundamental business terms of the agreement are unchanged from what we told voters last week, that it's a 12-year agreement, it's that the, you know, the average of 50% reduction over time starts at 63%, ends up at 32. Those basic business terms are unchanged. We're just, we're going back and forth on some of the language. In the, in the agreement, we had, we've invited Pope Parry to give us their particular job growth targets that they feel that they can meet. We've insisted that they in fact reduce 130 jobs by the end of the agreement, which is, which is, which was one of the terms. They, how they get there, that, you know, we'd like them to give us a schedule and they've given us one that they think that they can meet. We're, I think, very, very close to finalizing that number. We'd like to achieve them, to achieve that target of 130 jobs by year 11, by year 11, so that if there's a failure to perform, we still have one more contract year to deal with, you know, to, to fix it, to deal with remediation.
Do we get any window into what type of jobs those are, by any chance?
Well, we, they, yeah, I mean, they've told us the, the types of jobs, but we're not, I mean, we're not speci-
Completely.
Yeah, we're not specifying those in the agreement itself. We're giving, you know, we're giving them the flexibility. They're, they're full-time, year-round jobs, though, these, that the, that the seasonal jobs that they create are on top of the, the permanent full-time ones that are created. So that, that's one area where we're still tweaking the agreement. The, the other areas that we're, in our discussions with Pope Parry, we've essentially said that we, we don't want to agree contractually to water down any language that the statutes or regulations may give us in, in dealing with a failure to perform. That, that there are procedures that are mapped out for seeking decertification for failure to perform. That's a law, that's not an abrupt process, that, that's, that's a long process that also involves the state and their determination, and certainly allows for, for us to consider whatever the circumstances are at, at the time. So we're, I'd say we're very, very close to the final form of the language. We're only, you know, there's only a clause or two that, that our council are, are still not in agreement about between ours and theirs. So, but we are under a bit of a time crunch now that by next week, the, that's the deadline for getting the signed documents into the state in order to make the, the December quarterly meeting of the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. And that's the timetable that, that Pope Parry needs in order to be able to, and that Condi needs in order to be able to get going on the building and having it ready for occupancy by a year from next, next spring. So what we're looking for tonight is an authorizing vote of the Board of Selectmen, and it can be subject to, I'd say, let's make it subject to approval as to form by town council of the two agreements that, that, that have been negotiated. One is the Tax Increment Financing Agreement itself, and the other is the Host Community Agreement. Now, now, the, the TIF agreement, as we discussed last week, that is what you've been authorized to do by, by town meeting. The Host Community Agreement, you're authorized to do on your own, but we, we have not concluded the discussion. We started the discussion at, at your last meeting, but we did, we did not conclude what that, how that Host Community Agreement would, would, what the, what the business terms would be. So what we do have, though, is $300,000 in mitigation funds that are being paid by the, by the other parties, by, it's $200,000 by the company. Well, it's 300 between the two of them.
100 by the company.
Yeah, 100 by the company, 200 by the landlord. So that's the, that's the, the division that they came up with, that's fine with us, you know, just so long as the total is 300. The only, the only thing that would, we'd need to address, and how much or little we say is entirely in the Board of Selectmen's purview, is, is what the agreement should say about the purpose of the mitigation funds. I'd say the draft that's in front of you right now is silent on, on it, frankly, because in our negotiations with Pope Parry recently, we've said, you know, that we'll take the money and it's really the, and what's spent with, and how the money is spent is really the town's business. Whether the Board of Selectmen wants to say in the agreement what the purpose is or not, we've had, we have had two other mitigate, we have had two other Host Community Agreements involving mitigation, and that, one was for Reed Meadow, where ultimately we'll get, I think about a hundred, closer to $100,000 than to the minimum of $50,000 that that, that that agreement provides for. But that agreement specifically says the purpose of the mitigation funds is, is affordable housing for that, for that, for those funds, in part because we were letting them out of an affordable housing deed restriction, and in return for which we wanted to have a, have that same use, be, that, you know, since you're losing the benefit of the deed restricted affordable housing on one hand, that we wanted to clearly say that the funds we get in return for the release will go back towards their original purpose. In the, in the 15 Great Road mitigation agreement, we, there's, Host Community Agreement, rather, that there's essentially two pots of money. One is $100,000 that came from the Orchard subdivision decision that the planning board made. In that case, the $100,000 in mitigation funds was earmarked for recreation purposes, because that's what they deemed to do. The other funds, and it will total about $614,000 by our estimates, is not restricted. It simply doesn't say, the agreement doesn't say. It simply doesn't say, the agreement doesn't say. So you can, you can say it or not say it in the, in the Host Community Agreement, and it's, it's the Board of Selectmen's determination of what it says.
Is it a, a choice that has been made tonight, or is it something, can we take the funds in and make choices later on where those funds go?
The answer to that is yes, you can, if, if you, but you do have to, you do have to approve the Host Community Agreement by the time you're submitting the TIF Agreement. So, that the way to preserve your, your option to spend it on whatever you like is to not, is to not say what it's for in the Host Community Agreement. That is, to have it be, to simply be 300,000 for mitigation, period. That, because your agreement with the, with Pope Parry, which is, it's a two, and, and Condyne, that's a, that's a multi-party agreement to which you want, you, they need to sign, sign it as well as you do. They're willing to sign an agreement that doesn't say what the money's for, and therefore, that leaves the use of the funds completely within your determination. And when you decide what the funds are for, you, you don't have to decide that now, you don't have to decide it next week, or any time, frankly, you know, until you want to ask Town Meeting to appropriate the funds for a particular use. But what, but what gives you maximum flexibility on how you might spend it is by not having language in the Host Community Agreement that states what the purpose is.
And the advantage of that methodology, of course, would be that we would then be able to develop policies and guidance in how we want to approach mitigation funds in general. This won't be the last time. Hopefully, it won't be the last.
Hopefully, we'll have other opportunities to have mitigation funds made available to the town for whatever purpose the town decides. And, and that's really, that's really the key, that if, it's, it's not, it's not the entity paying the mitigation funds that's deciding what the use is, it's, it's the town that's deciding. And by not specifying the use in the, in the Host Community Agreement, you, you give the town maximum flexibility on what you can use the funds for.
That's not to say the town can't change it either. I mean, the town, town has the authorization to change the HCA at any time, any town meeting.
If you, if you have, if you have the funds there, it, it does require, and I think there may have been some confusion on the floor last week, but it's not, it's not the Board that brings the HCA funds that decides their ultimate use. It's Town Meeting by virtue of appropriating the funds for that use.
So what we, what's in the HCA can be changed at Town Meeting floor?
Can I go back to the, the jobs part of?
Yeah.
Where did the number 130 come from?
That was their proposal. That was their proposal off from day one, hundred, that they would maintain 237 jobs.
What, what, what that is?
And that they would add 130.
Yeah, what that, what that is, is they're, they're planning, they're planning to shut down two other facilities, one in Colorado, one in Maine, and then there is one in, no, Whitensville. And they're proposing they're going to lose staff through attrition based on the move. So I think that's where they came up with their numbers during the cost.
But we, but we, I mean, we had some language that would have essentially allowed them, some language they offered that would essentially allow that figure to erode down to considerably lower than 130, and we said, no, you know, we, we need 130. You can take your time getting there, but you need to get there. So my suggestion would, would be, if you adopt the, the motions in their, their form, that we, that we add the, the provision of, as appropriate, subject to approval as to form by Town Council, that will give us the opportunity to, to complete the negotiations to, to the satisfaction of your intent. And then, and then in the next couple of days, I would think we'll finalize it, and we can have the documents ready for execution.
Need to just, something I'm not clear on. We talked about going to Town Meeting. The Town Meeting can't alter the agreement. Town Meeting can only alter how we use the appropriation.
For, for the Host Community Agreement?
For the Host Community Agreement?
Yeah, for, for how you spend the mitigation funds. Well, while you can have your idea of how you'd like to spend them, until Town Meeting votes it, it hasn't, it, that is a necessary step. Town Meeting has to vote to spend.
Once we vote this agreement, that's the agreement, period. Right?
The company. Once you vote either, yeah, you've been, well, on the TIF Agreement, you've already been authorized by Town Meeting.
Right.
So you have, you have the flexibility to approve the TIF Agreement now, amend it, you know, at any future time, although I've never seen one amended. And the Host Community Agreement is your, you are, you do not require Town Meeting authorization to sign it. Town Meeting would need to approve the, the, the spending of the money.
Okay, that, that's the precedent.
So.
Clear, fine.
We can't spend, we can't vote here to spend it on anything with, unless it's, you, you, we need to go to Town Meeting to have that.
And if, and if we put it in for active recreation, or any other bucket that we see fit, if, if at Town Meeting floor, that wants to be changed, instead of active recreation, put it into housing, that can also be accomplished in Town Evening, so.
Or open space.
Or open space, whatever the case may be.
Or historical.
Oh, thank you.
How would the article be?
Make sure everybody's got a shot. So.
How would that article be worded if, if we did that? Because if you, if, if the town, and, you know, I'm thinking, I'm ahead of the Town Meeting now, maybe we don't need to do that, but if, if we put it in to say, we put it in for one particular purpose, and they change it to one of the other, some other category, that would be going outside of the four corners of the article, and that wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to amend it in that way. Correct?
If Town, if, if the, well, I think in general, if you, if we had a proposal to put money in for a particular purpose, and Town Meeting didn't like that purpose, that they would probably need to defeat the article.
Similar to Article 6, this past Town Meeting.
Yeah.
I think what we have here is the TIF Agreement is separate.
Yes.
The HCA becomes a second. Now, we can probably do it in one motion, but pots one and two, or do them one at a time. And then, as it's written here, and now I'm speaking to the HCA, there is no restriction on it. The value is $300,000. That's agreement between the town and the company and the property owner. So we're kind of going down a road that, there is no road to be gone at this point, I think. I think we're all somewhat in agreement that we're not going to put any restriction in the HCA, nor should there be, and we did discuss this last meeting. That's town business. The business between us, the company, and the property owner is the $300,000. That's, that's how I see this at this point.
Good. You want to move on?
I'll do the, the TIF.
This'll take a half hour.
No. Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Article 8 of the November 12, 2014 special Town Meeting as follow, one authorize the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement between the town, Pope Parry, Inc., and parent holding company, PHI Acquisitions, Inc., the company, and mass, Littleton Land LLC, the property owner, for the property containing 51.82 acres located at three distribution circle as shown on assessor's map, our 21 parcel 9-1, which agreement provides the incremental real estate and personal property tax exemptions beginning at 62.1% in year one and ending at 33.9% in year 12. And two, authorize the town administrator to prepare and submit the TIF agreement and a certified project application submission to the Massachusetts Economic Assistant Coordinating Council, EACC, and to make any determinations and representations required in connection herewith, and take such other actions as may be necessary to obtain approval for the TIF agreement and certified project application, and to implement the TIF agreement, subject to approval as to form by Town Council.
We're supposed to do all that in one breath.
Yeah.
You're pretty good, though.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? All right.
So the second motion is in regards to the HAC, and I'd like to, I'd like to amend the agreement that we have before us, or make a recommendation where it says, I don't know what page it is. I just got this to folks, so it's late break, and so I didn't have it this afternoon, but before I got in this meeting. It says in page two, number three, the 300,000 due to the town pursuant of the HAC received for mitigation purposes as determined by the Board of Selectmen. Again, I'd like to see that read, the 300,000 due to the town pursuant to the HAC received for the mitigation purposes for recreational purposes.
Jimmy, I'd reiterate what I said just before we took the motion.
I heard you, PJ.
And that is, this is the agreement between us, the company, and.
Here's the thing, PJ.
A little, a little more, a second.
Go ahead.
Between us, the company, and landlord.
Yep.
How we do business inside of our town with that mitigation money is our town's business, and I sincerely believe that. I understand your desire and your commitment to wanting to use it in a particular area, and that's fine, and I would not be objecting to that particular area, just not in this forum, this evening, in this agreement. That's all.
Okay. And again, this can be changed at any time during the process in regards to actual allocation and appropriation of these said funds.
Precisely, it can be changed at any time.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's why I'm saying, you know, at least folks in town that I've heard from, you know, we, we make a, at least an effort.
Well, I, I think if, if your amendment is in there, then it can, we can only recommend it be used for some form of recreation. I don't think, I think that ties our hands as far as choosing anything else that may, we may or may not want to do, or Town Meeting for that matter.
Not legally, Alex.
If, if the agreement says, if we sign a legal agreement with the company, says it has to be used for active recreation, it has to be used for active recreation.
Not if the town doesn't want it to be. It could be changed on Town Floor.
I don't know why we even have to sign an agreement and put our names on it, then, if, if it doesn't mean what it says.
Because I made the motion. That's, that's, that's all.
But I think the other thing that's important here is, is, you know, and I agree with what Paul is saying, is that, you know, we, we want, whether it ends up in recreation or not, will, should be a matter for this Board to discuss in open session in front of the public, like it's here tonight, and a whole decision-making process that goes on with that. There's no need to tie it in with Pope Parry. And we're perfectly capable of handling this ourselves without putting it in the Host Community Agreement. And I think that's what Town Meeting was telling us when we, when we went through our exercise that night, that, that these things need to be separated out and be more clear.
There's nothing on Town Floor about any HAC, Host Community Agreement. It was all to do with allocating money and appropriating money.
Period. Well, you're, you're a very strong advocate for, you know, the active recreation, and I don't disagree with that. But I, I think the best place to have this discussion is a discussion about what we want to do specifically with that money, and how we want to propose to Town Meeting we want to spend it, and not in this agreement with Pope Parry. They don't have an interest in this. They do not, their impact is not on, has nothing to do with recreation. It's just an impact fee, and that's the way we should look at it with them. And then we can take up how we want to use that money at another time.
That being said, the motion reads, just to approve the mitigation payment of 300,000, so we'll move forward on that, Mr. Chair. We don't have to make a decision on the HCA today. So till we get what you had? The motion reads, all, all we're really asking, making a motion for tonight, is to be able to execute a $300,000 mitigation fund.
Right. Yes. Yeah, because, because in essence, what you're, you're doing, you, you are really, you really are establishing a two-step process by the vote tonight to simply take the money, step one. And there really is a step two. There will be a step two. Whether you can reach agreement on it tonight, you don't need to. But when you can't, but there will be a, a time when you will decide how you want that money spent, so.
So I'm, I'm good. I just wanted to throw that in there, but this, the motion tonight is just to, to, to get this thing rolling. It's not to designate it anyway.
Okay. So we want to make a motion, number two?
Be happy to move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the execution of the Host Community Agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the company and the property owner, providing a mitigation payment of 300,000.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? All right. Moving on.
I've, I've put an item here next for a recap of the budget review. In the event that we wanted to spend some time talking about that, in deference to the schedule, I'd suggest we, if we want to take that up later, or, or whatever, do that, do that later, but, where we've got two agenda items, two, a business to act on in 5A and 5B, and then the Personnel Board, and Jack, Jack, don't, what are those new glasses?
Yeah.
That we, that we might skip item four right now and go to.
Are you talking for the evening, or?
Well, to see how you feel about it after item 6A, so, is all I'm saying.
Just table it later on. Okay, 5A approval of appointments to tax collector.
Yes, we're very happy. We have selected a very qualified internal candidate for the position of tax collector, just being vacated by Rebecca Quinn, who's retiring at the end of this month, at the end of December, I'm sorry. We did post the position in accordance with the personnel backlog. I did actually follow the draft hiring procedure that we'll be discussing later this evening for the process. We had a committee together that represented the entire finance team, the treasurer, the collector, the assessor, and the town clerk, and myself. We received 18 applications. We selected four for an interview. One did withdraw once we contacted her for an interview. So we did do three interviews in a whole of two days. And we selected Debbie Richards from the school department, who has been there for a number of years. She has a lengthy history with over 21 years of various accounting and financial experience, 12 years of which is with the town of Littleton. She's familiar with our financial software, our processes. Steve and I both work very closely with her as her position in the school department, and we're pleased to bring her forward. She could not be here this evening, I apologize. She had some other business to take care of, but we will work with the school department to have that transition be smooth.
May I just comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Deb Richards is an extraordinarily capable and dedicated employee of the town. She's vested in the town. Previous coming on the Board, you know, was on the school committee for eight years, and I obviously had the opportunity to work with Deb over those eight years as we would do various financial things for the schools. Wonderful, wonderful choice for the town. Schools are going to feel that pinch, and they're going to work hard. But Bonnie and Steve Mark have come to a very good arrangement as far as, and Deb is very amenable to this, too, which just further shows her dedication to the town, is to work together and help through that transition on that side of the house also. So this, this is a brilliant choice. Well done, Bonnie.
Thank you. We're lucky.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Town Code 17, 3A subsection, to approve the appointment by the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget of Deborah Richards of Westford as tax collector for the town of Littleton, effective upon the retirement of tax collector Rebecca Quinn on December 31, 2014.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Staffing vacancy review relating to the Highway Parks Working Foreman. Anything?
We had a proposal that, the Board actually voted to let us fill this vacancy a year ago, April, and we decided the better of it, that we needed to undertake a, a study of highway operations to make sure that filling this working foreman was the best way to, to do it. The Board has allowed us to temporarily fill the Parks Division with seasonal help since then. But with the completion of the Highway Operations Report that we included in the budget presentation this year, and we'll discuss, we'll be talking about other recommendations in that report in the, in the future, but the in that report in the, in the future, but the one thing that was clear to us is that, is that filling the working foreman position for, for the Parks Division was something that we should do and go ahead with. There's, at a later date, we'll discuss whether there needs to be additional staffing for the division as well, as recommended by the, the study, but, but we do want to move forward with filling the supervisory position. It's an internal posting within the union, and we would like to move ahead with that.
Jimmy, does this position work right into the Highway Department's work in the wintertime?
Yeah, it was a position that was vacated by someone else, so it's just been filled in, you know, temporarily, well, like a year and a half, so it's been quite, quite long.
So would this then, so at some point, we would be going back for a backfill of a highway position? Is that right? No? Once we create this position?
We had already filled the result.
What we did is, we had, back in last year, we filled the position, the laborer position at that time, and temporarily have a, another employee working out of class as a supervisor. So we filled the vacancy, but we didn't do the permanent promotion at that point, we wanted to have the study results done. So this would not increase the FTE or the, the number of positions within the Highway Department.
Okay. All right. That's good. Any?
Yep.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Highway Operations Manager a request under the Staffing Vacancies Review Policy to fill full-time benefit position of a Highway Parks working foreman through internal posting and promotion.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Was proposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck, Jim. There comes the snow. There comes the snow.
No snow? Just that freezing rain?
It's freezing.
It's twenty-seven tonight, so. It was, you know, we didn't report on the MBTA site, but it's probably worth mentioning because we were on the freezing rain, so.
That's what we thought.
But there was, but we had met with, and Jim, Jim was out there with us as well, but we, we got some folks from the MBTA to come and look at the commuter rail station parking situation. We had a vice president there, had our friend Paul Hadley from the T, who's worked with a lot over the years on the Capital Project, and they're going to, they're going to do their best to see if they can't carve out another thirty to fifty spaces from their existing configuration, and they think they might be able to get twenty-five or thirty up above, that is, where they built the new two hundred spaces, whether by restriping or frankly, you look at where the cars are illegally parked now, and just pave it and stripe it, and they think they might be able to, to get that done, and then they're looking at the right-of-way along the, on the, on the Grimes Lane side, where the, where the free public parking used to be before they built the new station, to look at how much of that right-of-way on either side of the track can they carve out for additional parking. So we got the commitment that they would do that, we'll be glad to follow up on it. Certainly a cheaper, you know, it's not going to relieve the need for additional parking in the future, but if they could, if they could throw thirty or fifty spaces at us now would really help with the existing demand, and I was very pleased that they came out and, even in the freezing rain, to, to see what they could do to help the situation.
Do we have any idea on timeframe in the short term?
We do not. Luke Gobbin, are you kidding me? He's got to make all those appointments and then what else?
I wouldn't expect inside of a year.
It'll be two years. It'll be two years.
I wouldn't expect inside of a year, because when you look at the design approvals, contracting and everything, than the actual construction. But I would like to add to what Keith said. Previous to today, my exposure to the MBTA has been as a rider. Five gentlemen came out today, and their sincerity and commitment to try and help us out there really struck me. I have to say, I was very, very impressed by them today, and as Keith said, certainly it was raining, but, you know, it was for our direct benefit. For them, yes, it's their job, but they certainly came out and they were out there walking the grounds and thinking through some stuff, so it was an excellent opportunity today.
Great. Thank you. And thanks, Joe.
Sorry, six A and six B is work and effort put in by the Personnel Board to talk about hiring procedures and also about evaluations. Did you want to open this up at all, since?
No, I would defer to the chair.
Mr. Chair? Yes, what we're here for tonight is to, oh, I would say, present and, you know, get some feedback, questions and what have you regarding two policies that we've been working on. And the policies that we have before us is the hiring policy, which, as you have already seen, was quite lengthy, but, you know, there is a, the appendix takes fifteen pages of, you know, and it's full of forms, and the first fifteen are the literature as to what's necessary, and then there's a little crib sheet in there as well. And we're, we're thinking that this is a policy that I would say the Human Resource Organization has really, you know, been implementing over time, and as we heard Bonnie say, that, you know, it's kind of getting some free test rides. And it's a critical one, because this is where we're facing an applicant, and it's also an area where there is a high chance or a bigger risk for the wrong, you know, statements being made, the wrong questions being asked, the wrong procedure being taken, and what happens is that it then increases, you know, our liability. Also, by having something this consistent, it really, you know, portrays to an applicant, because what we're trying to do is attract and, you know, motivate and retain our employees, and by just having a procedure that is well laid out, well documented, it, you know, has been, you know, it will get applicants to say, hey, you know, this town has their act together, so it's a good first impression. On the performance review with multi-member boards, we're reacting to a situation that kind of highlighted that we need some work to be done as to where should a review take place? Is, and what's the purpose of a review? And it's good back-and-forth conversation and goal-setting between a supervisor and an employee. And is this the best, is a public meeting a best place to do it? Is there a better way to go about this and still be within, you know, the open meeting law as well as doing the right thing for the employee and also for, you know, the particular group that is trying to set some, you know, standards that the employee is representing? So we thought these two were critical, one for, you know, the applicant on the coming-in process, and then one for the employee who was on board and definitely deserves a quality performance review. And we're feeling both of these definitely, you know, I would say, would impact the overall, you know, morale and the overall, oh, I would say, feeling of employees, that there's going to be some consistency, some fairness in the application of both of these processes.
Can I ask you one thing?
Yeah.
Would you mind coming out front and have Mr. Dolan go out front too?
Sure. Thank you.
Jack, you sit in the, in the background, I didn't want that to happen.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
So can we go to the first one first?
Yes.
I mean, this was...
Which would you like to see?
Hiring.
Yeah, the hiring process. I know that...
Multi-board, okay. Oh, the hiring? Okay. Good. Yep?
For myself, I thought this was extremely interesting, I thought well thought out. I don't know, did you use other examples, or was this something the Personnel Committee put together? It's...
I, I would say it's been the work of the Human Resource Organization right here in town that has, you know, basically documented what they have been doing, and then through review with Town HR Council, has, you know, making sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, so it's not going to, you know, pose any type of liability. But, you know, our own Human Resource Organization, working with us, through us, you know, has spent time and effort. That's how, how it germinated, Joe.
Okay. I'm probably going to have some specific questions.
Okay, I just have a general question.
Yeah.
I read it, as Chair said, it's, it's well thought out and well-developed, I think, except for one thing.
Okay.
And before I knew tonight, the Veterans' Preference Law that was just approved, I'd like to see, you know, and not accept the policy personally tonight, but to have it reworked so that we could have that bylaw incorporated into the policy, I think would be a good thing. That, that's my only comment, I think, you know, it's...
I gave Jack a heads up on that too, because Jack had drafted the bylaw, and I told him that the AG had just finally approved.
I didn't even know it was approved, that was my only comment that I had written down was the, the law that was passed last annual. Being in the position of my real job, it looked very good.
If I may?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as far as the Veterans' Preference, because it was just approved by the AG's office, it wasn't incorporated in the draft, it makes perfect sense to have that be part of the process. One possibility might be to approve the, the document tonight with the understanding that that will be, or with the proviso that that be incorporated into the process. Clearly, it's required to be considered now that it's been voted on by Town Meeting and approved by the AG's office, but it makes perfect sense to have it reflected in the hiring document as well, since this is intended to be a comprehensive process.
And that, that would probably be just a reference back to the bylaw, right?
It would indeed, yes.
So we just have to create connecting language?
Well, it could, it could be, but I think also because of the level of detail that we go into with the procedures...
Absolutely.
That I think that we need, I think we need to think through some, with some clarification of, all right, we've got a Veterans' Preference bylaw, what does that mean? How do you do it? Because we, because we've offered specific examples on many of the other parts of the hiring process. It's meant to be a guidebook for, for a department head, for a hiring authority, okay, what do I do? How do I implement it? And we need, and we've said things like, well, the Veterans' Preference would be applied for an initial hire, not for promotions, for example. Well, I think we need to say, I think we need to spell that out.
I mean, it's so detailed right now, right down to you have sample questions and MCAD issues and all that, so I think Keith's point, to Keith's point, to have it more detailed, I'd like to see where it fits and how it fits also.
That's fine, I'm more than happy to do that.
That's fine.
And, you know, it may well be that this isn't the only time that you see permutations of this, because it's a living document.
Sure, sure.
I was going to ask about that, your maintenance procedure, so how, when does, when do things get updated, and what's the process to do that?
Well, just speaking from my perspective, if there were any changes in the law that necessitated a change in this, it's the type of thing I would, I would speak with the town about or send a bulletin about, and then work on amending the document, but changes could also come from the town's Personnel Board whenever they saw a need.
Oh, good.
And they're, you know, one of the things that I truly enjoy, one of the reasons that I truly enjoy working with Littleton is because it's one of the most proactive communities I deal with. You know, this, this document is something I wish all my clients would consider adopting in some fashion.
We even have a name for proactive in Littleton, that's Ann Esmond.
Well, I was going to single Ann out. I work very closely with Ann, and again, she's always sort of scanning the horizon and trying to find the best practices that may not exist yet here and bring them on board, and it's great, so. Part of that is, of course, making sure that in practice it works, so the fact that you've had it tested a couple times is great, but as you work with it over the years, undoubtedly there'll be things that have to be changed, and we'll, we'll make amendments or proposed amendments and then have the board act on them. Steve?
Just, just to go back to the Veterans thing for a second, then this policy is meant to be town-wide, not just bylaw-specific, so it's being used right now, Jimmy has a hire, we're trying to go through this, and we're hoping that Police and Fire adopt it once, once you guys adopt this as a formal policy. The Veterans piece, absolutely, it should be in here and mentioned, but I think the language of the bylaw is pretty specific to bylaw employees, I mean, it's just people within this building, so there'd be language in here that doesn't apply to a lot of the places that we'll be using this document.
And Steve, I get that, and during the negotiation process and the up-and-coming negotiations with all the towns' unions, with the exception of the school, Light and Water, we will be working through Town Council and department heads to ensure that some type of, so that gets in the CBA.
That's all I need.
So, yeah, yeah, we'll definitely be working on that.
Move, Robbs?
Yes, truly agree on pretty much everything that's been said into the specifics and your thoughts, I think it covers what you like. There'll be a chapter, should be a paragraph, subparaphrase, whatever, Veterans' Preference, and very specifically outlining what the Veterans' Preference is, how it's scored and how it's applied, should be. I don't know if you were asking for complete reiteration of the bylaw endless?
Oh, no, I'm just, it's such a nice document where, you know, you're, you're telling how to score things out, the, the minimum requirements, preferred requirements, it's all, it's got to be worked into all those different phases of the process, so, that's all I'm saying. The law is what, the bylaw is what it is, but it needs to be worked into the document, that's all incorporated. Yeah. Other than that, it's really nice.
That's great.
I just wanted to comment about the amount of work and time and effort that's been gone, gone into this, and Ann Esmond is one, one of the people that's been diligently coming to our meetings and, and putting stuff in front of us, and the Fire Department has been a major contributor to this process as other, as we've received input from a lot of other organizations in town on how to do this, and this, I, the Personnel Board has, has been working really hard on, on getting this done and working with everybody else to get it done, so I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of, of the members of the Personnel Board and those who've been contributing in getting this, yeah.
Yeah, very well done.
I do want to mention too, that I had a very nice email from Alex, I don't know, but a month ago, when I, when I yanked the bar...
You don't get nice emails from me.
When I yanked it, well, you were questioning, but I had it yanked off the agenda on purpose because we had a lot of things going on that night, and I thought this might be something that we all want to discuss, but it wasn't removed, you know...
For any other reason.
And he had a good point too, because a lot of times, it's happened in the past, where committees have sat down for a year, eighteen months, they go through all the work, and suddenly it gets tabled and put on the shelf and no one gets to it. I wouldn't be surprised if it was, he was afraid of when he, when he informed, but I just wanted to...
Test it out.
Yeah, but no, this is phenomenal work. I had this real, I've read through it, and you have an individual rating form.
Yep.
My question is, if, if I'm one of the ones that's doing an interview, and you have room for comments, but you have a, a system one through five, say, and everyone's human, say, I'm interviewing Jimmy, and I give Jimmy three or four and a couple fives, but then I interview Alex, and I find out that Alex is the better candidate, and I've already given him a five, how, how does that work out? Can you write comments?
It's called a pencil, don't use a pen.
One way to approach that is having sat on...
May I have the Department of Corrections?
Yeah, having sat on central promotion boards, you know, where we look at thousands of records, looking to promote people, there's certainly those in the process are charged with consistency. It must be consistent. Now, as you said, we're all human, but sometimes practice also, some test cases, if you will, where you're given three or four different previous employees that were select or from a group that had been selected previously, and you sit down and go through that scoring process, obviously the interview's not going to be part of that, but to release any of the rec, you have the resume, and then get folks that would be involved in the hiring, even if it comes down to one individual is actually going to do the hiring, at least you'll have put some thought into it, into, I'm looking for this, and I was consistent in thought here, and now when it comes time to look at the one that's really, the job that's really open, there's a more tendency to a consistency at that point, I think that's something that can be helpful, but that becomes a best practice perhaps of the particular supervisor or hiring committee, that may be, or at least the recommending committee.
That was one area that, at least in my conversations with Ann, we, we struggled with.
That was one area that, at least in my conversations with Ann, we struggled with, because you want as much uniformity as possible. The whole purpose of a numerical rating system is to make the process more objective and less subjective. That said, when it comes down to hiring decisions, often, what you end up doing, at least in part, is saying, what is my gut saying? Is this person a good fit? So, there is one element in the rating process that has some room for that, I forget what we called it ultimately, because we struggled with the terminology.
You didn't put down gutsy?
But there is a factor there for demeanor, or something like that, and I think there is, there is a little latitude in that one area, where you can let that visceral reaction sort of come through. And I think there's a place for that. Any questions from the board?
So, I guess, can we introduce this policy with the eye towards, I should say, accept this policy, the eye towards approving it? Because our procedure is a two-step procedure.
Uh huh.
And then proceed from there, or do we want to see the changed wording updates for the Veterans' Preference in there before we accept the policy?
Personally, I'd like to see it changed.
Nice idea. That's me. You would have to take a second vote in any event, what you might want to do is, and it's a little different than the strict two-step process, but maybe you'd want to receive, as the motion says, receive the proposed policy tonight, invite the Personnel Board to amend it to address Veterans' Preference, and to schedule the adoption of the policy upon their completion of that task.
That's pretty much what I was trying to say, I didn't spin it out.
So that you're assigning that, you're not, and then you will have to schedule a later vote to adopt it after they wrap it.
Right, so we'll accept the policy...
Receive it tonight.
Receive it, come in, and then do the revisions, come back. So, we're not going to do, schedule any adoption tonight?
No. Except, receive it tonight, assign the task to them, and then we'll schedule adoption when they've completed their task. We won't act on adoption until they've amended it.
So...
Ask you one more question.
I'm sorry.
Chief?
Having not seen the finished document yet myself.
Oh, you haven't?
I have not, man.
Chief? Oh, no, that's not, that's not even, I mean, I assumed you guys were all involved.
I'm going to point you to where all, went out to all the town departments when it was, when it was adopted, when the Personnel Board adopted it.
Then I'd hold, I, you know, we've got two major hiring authorities in the room that's saying they haven't seen it, I'd pull back. I wish Jim was here just to say.
They have participated in the process.
Well, I'll get the date that they got it.
Okay.
So, we can have that discussion right now.
Well, no, what's more important...
If they didn't read it, then that's...
We don't seem to have a problem putting it off to our next meeting, and that gives the two chiefs, or anybody else that may not have had the opportunity to review it. I think you've got the consensus here. We like what you're seeing.
It's all good.
And we're asking that the Veterans' Preference be added, and we'd like to ask the opportunity that our division chiefs, who haven't had an opportunity for whatever reason, do see it. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Let's just leave it at that.
Perfect. Yeah. So, no motions needed?
Nope.
Okay, and the second one. Personnel board. Extremely interested in hearing exactly the four different choices we have, what your thoughts. I think we've all read it, but to hear what you both have to...
Well, what we're, our aim here, as I had, you know, earlier mentioned, was to have something that allowed a rich conversation between supervisor and employee in regard to, on the front end, it would be the setting of goals, reflecting the needs of that particular department, and then, in the case of a performance review, measuring some stats. So, we're focusing on a quality conversation. And the thought went that, you know, what environment would help the, you know, likelihood of a healthy conversation? And we kind of looked at, okay, let's do it in public, and we kind of said, what does that take? Meaning, a supervisor wanted to do it with his whole board, and kind of say, okay, it's your turn, Joe, we're going to review your performance, and, you know, all of the steps that they would have to take to post it, and what have you, and, you know, collect, and what have you, and then pay attention to a, you know, a public meeting law, and keep the records according to a public meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So, we kind of said, hmm, you know, that's a possibility, but there's a lot of steps. Is there an easier, better way to accomplish what we would like to achieve? So, we went, you know, down then to a step two, which kind of is a step out of a public meeting, and then three and four, which is a delegation of the right to hold this meeting, and those, you know, the preferred is three and/or four, because of the individual, you know, one-to-one type of dealing, and we're feeling it would be a richer conversation, it would probably be a more realistic conversation, and we're just kind of saying it's going to benefit the employee with a better feeling, and it also is going to benefit the town, because there's going to be strengths and weaknesses discussed, and steps to take to address the weaknesses so that they become strengths. And in that light, that's what it was, Joe, is where is going to be the best environment to hold this, what we would say, one-to-one conversation with a supervisor and a manager, or a supervisor and the employee? And then we kind of said, what are the alternatives, and, you know, Jack helped us, you know, work our way through, okay, as we said, you know, in the four steps here. And now, you want, maybe, as to why we're thinking, you know, we're recommending, you know, more three and/or, and/or four, rather than one or two, Jack can maybe highlight it from a council standpoint?
I'd really like to have you explain three and four, the differences.
Okay.
I mean, I've read it, I think the board has read it, but to have you point out, three and four seem like logical steps, and I'm just speaking for myself, because I asked the board, but why do one and not the other, and does, does four, if you go with number four, does that mean all boards? I guess what I'm trying to say is, number three, we would still have the town administrator, but under four, he'd be in control of all of it?
Where a memorandum of agreement with a particular board...
Okay.
Would allocate, you know, that he would act in their behalf in that review, correct?
But is that the same in three and four, I guess?
No, no, no.
Three, just by way of an example, three is, three is the, with the memorandum of agreement, is what we did with the Council on Aging, for example, when there was an agreement between the Council and the Board of Selectmen, that the COA Director, whom they appoint, would be, that their performance review would be conducted by me, essentially by contractual agreement, because my statute allows me to do whatever you assign me to do, or whatever another board requests of me that you approve. So, that, so that's, so that was the hook. From there, though, we, that was, but that was how far we got with that sort of informal agreement, contractual agreement, if you will. The next step was essentially to make it permanent, was when we went from, again, with the, in that case, with the agreement of the Council on Aging, we said, we went and amended the position at town meeting, so that it was no longer a Council on Aging Director, it was something else. It was a Director of Elder and Human Services, which does not get appointed by statute by the Council on Aging, so it could be appointed, so the position could be appointed by whomever town meeting says is the appointing authority. So, by agreement between Council on Aging and the Selectmen, we brought forward a proposal to have the Elder and Human Services Director be appointed by the town administrator, subject to the approval of the Selectmen with the concurrence of the Council on Aging. It's a little, it's a little different, but it, but the appointing authority for that position now falls into, what for this is a category four...
Yeah.
Which is to say that it's not the Council on Aging that is the appointing authority, I'm not acting on their behalf, they've essentially, through town meeting, delegated the appointment to me, and I make the appointment and conduct the review.
Yeah, the actual evaluation process would work virtually the same, whether it's three or four. The difference, if I had to sum it up in one word, would be permanency, although nothing's permanent, obviously, in town government, as you discussed earlier, the town meeting can change a variety of things, and they could change this arrangement. But it's a little more transitory if it's simply done by a memorandum of understanding. If town meeting instead says that the appointing authority will be the town administrator for a particular position, you don't need to have a series of memoranda of understanding or agreement about it. That becomes the more permanent arrangement for evaluating or discharging, if that ever came to it, that particular individual. The whole, or part of the context for this whole discussion, of course, is the open meeting law. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I brought the open meeting law frequently asked question on evaluations from the Division of Open Government website. I thought it might be helpful for the board to have this as a resource.
Sure.
If you don't mind, I'll just distribute it. If you don't mind. I think there's enough copies. Years ago, whether it was correct under the prior version of the open meeting law or not, a number of communities would conduct evaluations of personnel in executive session. It's very clear now, because of decisions that have been issued, and also because of the amendment of the open meeting law, that a board cannot conduct an evaluation of the professional competency of one of its employees or another employee in executive session. That has to be, if the board is going to act as a board, it has to be done in open session. And that gave rise to the concern with the chilling effect that would have on the free exchange of information. There's a sensitivity, obviously, on the part of a board towards, you know, the feelings of an employee, and the fact that the public is watching, and, you know, there may not be the same level of candor in the exchange of information in that evaluation process. And I think the town suffers, or may suffer because of that, because you want that candid assessment, both ways, in the evaluation process. So, that's why the open process was not the favored one, not because you want to exclude the public from government generally, but when it comes to the matter of evaluating one employee's performance, the employee probably isn't going to speak his or her mind, nor is the employer likely to speak their collective minds. If the cameras are rolling, the public is sitting here, people tend to be a little more reserved in their comments. So, that's overall the reason for favoring options three and four. Questions from the board?
Isn't that also true for two, though, as well?
Yeah, option two is, falls under the same category. I mean, as far as what you were talking about, the open meeting law.
That's the board chairman as supervisor? Yes. Yeah, the one, the one greater risk there is that, let's use Mr. Knox as an example, if you don't mind, and this is obviously just hypothetical, but if Mr. Knox has been delegated by the board to serve as the supervisor of an employee and to conduct the evaluation, it may well be that, you know, you have a comment that you want to make sure is imparted to Mr. Knox, so that he can then share that with the supervisor. And then perhaps, Mr. Vella would also have a comment that he wanted to make sure is shared. What ends up happening is, is a greater likelihood of a serial meeting in the form of a series of discussions with the one evaluator, if the board is still participating in the process through its chair.
Not in the case where we designate, whether it be the chair or anybody else on this board, to evaluate either the chiefs or the town administrator, to say, okay, we're going to do the, any, you know, we're going to know what the, in a public meeting, know what the evaluation process is going to be, so that we can get comments to the individuals doing the evaluation.
Well, if you...
In that way, there is no change. It's done in an open meeting.
If you, well, you're essentially then doing number one, I think. You're essentially doing the aggregated evaluation process, which is number one. If you're going to share comments with the chair, or with whoever is conducting the evaluation on your behalf, if you're going to share your individual comments, those ultimately have to be shared at a public meeting, because that's deliberation.
So, in three and four, if we had a comment, we could not share that, is that what you're saying?
The problem is that deliberation is defined so broadly in the open meeting law, that it includes a series of conversations where your opinions are shared, so that it becomes an aggregate opinion, and it essentially becomes a majority. If only two of you ever spoke with one another, you wouldn't have deliberation, but if two people share their opinion with Mr. Knox, you essentially have three selectmen involved in the evaluation process, and that's a deliberation, which should be conducted in public, or at least chaired in the aggregate in public.
But I guess, what I'm saying is, we'd have the same problem in three and four, I guess in this case, if three of us had input to Mr. Bergman, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, in your example, hypothetically speaking, the chair does the town administrator, and then two selectmen do, a fire chief, two selectmen do a police chief, now we have a more, what would you call the discussion earlier? Vibrant discussion with our appoint, our appointment. My concern is, you know, this board appoints the administrator and the two fire chiefs. I think this board should do the evaluations of the administrator and the two chiefs, you know, that's my opinion.
May I offer this?
Sure.
This is a menu.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And it's, the menu's going to be, who wants to eat what on any particular night, if I can run with the analogy. Now, it's the individual boards, there's going to be some things. And that said, this is for employees of multiple boards, as I'm reading this. And we're kind of talking in the, as a singular, that an employee works for a single board, but am I missing something here?
No, it's a single employee who is working for a multiple member board.
And I'm multiple boards, multiple member boards, I'm sorry.
Right, because we have so many employees, myself, the two chiefs, the conservation coordinator, the parking rec director, the planning administrator, the secretary for the board of health, it's a long...
And I get all that.
...work for the boards.
Right, and I get all that.
So, we would have a menu to choose from.
So, right, so the board of health may say, the board of health may come down and say, you know what, let Bergman handle it, we're good to go, thank you very much.
We never have any rement already.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. All I'm talking about is this board, at this point, and the, you know, the three individuals that we have to appoint, that we have a say in the hiring process, so.
If we all want to do input, then we have to do it in an open session.
Correct, and that's why I said, the chair does the town, two do a chief, two do a chief, it kind of works out very nicely.
Well, obviously, always the good news about having two lawyers, his three opinions. I'm just with the joke. Because school committee, obviously...
Three bills.
The school committee obviously had its own council also, as you know, and the superintendent being the sole individual that the school committee has the higher fire authority over, and thus the supervisor authority, where each member would submit written comments to the superintendent, so he could digest them, but then in open meeting was a general discussion. So, if any of the three that you've just mentioned that the Board of Selectmen supervised, I should think, we'd each have that opportunity to make an input to the various chiefs and to Keith, but that the actual discussion takes place here at this table, in open meeting.
I don't think that's inconsistent with what I indicated. If you're doing any form of aggregation...
You do have to, yeah.
You do have to share it publicly. Again, ultimately, this is a policy decision for the board, you know, we have recommendations here. Part of the reason why it was recommended that it not be, you know, two members doing one person, two members doing another is, the other thing that does is, it takes away the consistency factor. You know, any two people doing an evaluation will do it differently, no matter how well they're trained, no matter how, you know, schooled they are in the process of evaluation, that human factor that we discussed earlier is introduced. So, there was also an effort to try and promote uniformity, but ultimately, if you decide to do it differently, that's your call.
And to that point, devil's in the detail. So, let's talk about the actual evaluation form, so to speak.
Sure.
You know, duties, expectations, milestones, and things like that. That can be very consistent, you know, throughout the whole process, and then you fill in the blanks, essentially, you know? So, I think that, to your point, we can... you know. So I think that, to, to your point, we can eliminate that human, that human factor a little bit by, by having some consistency with the form.
Well, agreed. Again, the only remaining reservation I would have about the board members participating is if the two of you are doing a police chief, for example, if any other board member speaks to you about that-
Gotcha, absolutely.
You've then inadvertently wandered into an open meeting violation.
Absolutely, I understand that 100th percent.
And if, if we stayed with two, your example, two, two and one, if you're doing the, the police chief, does that have to be public, or can they be?
It can be private. Be private if it's less than a quorum and you're not talking to any other member. Or, or serially.
And that's a decision the board's got to make. Does this board want to go full public and have this whole process be vetted through an open meeting? You know, that's, that's a decision we need to, we need to decide on also.
And the record keeping of that becomes, you know, it's a public record.
Absolutely.
Which, you know, you know, that's, at least to be considered, you know, do we want all of that-
A decision the board's got to make.
Yeah.
I get you. I get you. I get you.
And that may change from board to board, as boards change.
Policies can change anytime you want.
Yeah. One board might be happy to have the chair do it, and another board-
Absolutely.
All the members might want input.
Unless you've already done option four, then there'll be an extra step, the town meeting by law change, followed by the attorney general approving the-
Then we have a town manager. We don't have a town administrator.
And what's wrong with that?
You know, we'll talk about that.
You tossed him a softball on that one, Jimmy.
No, that was no softball. That, that had, you know.
Well, well, we could talk-
That is singer.
We've already done a discussion for another day.
The town administrator does appoint people, and does, does do.
So, and that's my feeling.
The one thing I see this, like, at three or four, if I go back 10 years when the town government study committee did their thing, we stopped at a certain point where we thought the town at that time would, would, would take certain amendments and other things wouldn't. We had talked about the idea of having one person do the evaluations, one person being in charge was consistent, straight on, thinking that that would be the way it would go in the future as, as the town grew and, and as times changed. I, I see that this could, this could be the step that we didn't take 10 years ago. That, that I, I, I think there's something strong with the idea that you have consistency, you have that person that's going to, to every single person, and not, nothing against this board, because I understand, you see, but, you know, two people here, two people there, and not one. Maybe, in my opinion, it might be this time that we, that we have one person do most of the-
Who supervises Keith and the chiefs?
We do, Peter.
The board. The board, so at some point, must there be a vote?
Four.
On the, if, if one individual from the board is conducting the evaluation, at some point, does this board have to vote on that evaluation?
The only vote we have to do is to delegate to a member of the board. If, if, in the framework of this policy, and what, what we spent a lot of time doing was to make sure we had, we had options that were legal, that, that passed muster. And from that list of options, that you would essentially, you could either do it as all five in public session, or you can decide to delegate it to less than a quorum. And whichever you do, that, that process is in place. If all you do is vote to, if you do vote to delegate it, have the chair do it, or, you know, or, or some combination, less than a quorum, whatever that is, that vote then is the last thing that you have to say about performance review for that person, because it won't be the board doing it, it will be whoever's, whoever's delegated.
Acting on behalf of the board.
Acting on, exactly, as authorized by the board, yeah.
Do the rest of the board members get to see the review?
Not unless you share it publicly, because then it's an aggregated review.
So how is this board then supervising an individual if the board doesn't get to see the evaluation?
You wouldn't be supervising them collectively, you would be entrusting the supervision to one individual that you had that faith in.
Or multiple individuals, in this case, too.
And I know I am no OML expert. But I always thought that no single individual can act as the board or committee. Only a quorum can.
Unless the board so delegates in, in a quorum, in the majority.
I just don't, I know we can do things, but as far as decisions, I just don't remember that caveat.
Your decision would be to delegate, and you would take that action collectively by majority vote, if you chose to go that route.
All right, thank you. I'm going to need a heck of a lot more convincing, and I appreciate your professional judgment on that. May we, at the very least, we're not going to vote on this particular issue.
No, no. No, and you're not deciding which option. I mean, we're outlining the menu of options, and it's not just for the sport. Again, because there's a dozen boards in town that have the authority, and some of them were, were in very much in need of the guidance of what, what options did they have. Some came to us and said that they don't want to do the, you know, especially if it's a clerical employee, they don't want to do the review in public session. What's the mechanism, what's the menu that we can offer so that that's not happening? And- Yeah, I think the intent of this entire document is to, I mean, the first intent is to keep people informed as to what their options are legally, you know, particularly other boards that may not, you know, they may not be fully aware, but what the requirements are under the open meeting law when it comes to something like this. And then what the beauty of this document is it states it. It says, here are your choices, and if you're going to stay within the confines of the law, you've got to pick from this menu. They exist, whether there's a document or not. And all we're doing by putting this out there is providing guidance, so that they can make an educated decision about which methodology they want to use and not go afoul with the open meeting law.
Well, we've had two simultaneous discussions. One is the document itself and allowing the office to go forward. Plenty happy with that. So I'm certainly saying, when what the document is written, then the, we also went down the road of discussing how we may want to do certain things. And that's where my discussion is at this point. So to sever the two, from my perspective, this is fine by me, and then at some point in the future, certainly would like to very much go into that on this.
Yeah.
And whatever you decide is fine with me. You know, my, my job here was, I was asked to do two things. Examine the legality of various options, and then also offer an opinion about best practices. Having done that, whatever you do is, is clearly in your bailiwick, and I'm never offended by any action a board takes in that regard, because you're elected to do that, and I'm not. So, thank you for the work.
But Paul, I think the, the question that you're at is, two people that have been delegated to do the review of the fire chief. They go out and do it, and conduct it, and share it, you know, it's a back and forth dialogue with the fire chief. Your question then is, hey, I'd like to see what was done, meaning you'd like the end result of that review, just to see it? And could that, then, is that a possibility by bringing it to a public meeting, to have Paul then get a copy of it?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's just a variation of option one.
Really?
Right. Well, not, not in the case, if there's, if we go on to a, an evaluation on a particular employee, and as a board member, we want to review that at any time, they work for us. We can go in and review that at any time. We don't need to bring it before this, an open meeting. They work for us. We're allowed to go and take a look at that review. So Paul, to answer your question, if we're doing a review on a fire chief, and you want to see that review, by all means, you're allowed to go and see that review.
Can then Alex go see it?
Yes.
Melissa, and then Joe.
Yes. All we're doing is reviewing, that's it. You're just looking.
Jack, they can go to the personnel file, then? Which is where it's going to be.
But, but then what do you do with that information? You know, if you have problems with anything that's said, or if you want to add something. I think if you're, if you're not comfortable with the notion of entrusting the evaluation process to a subset of your group, my suggestion would be follow the aggregate, aggregate review process, the aggregate review process. Because then you all have the opportunity to directly participate. I think there's a substantial risk of a serial meeting-
Option one, which we're talking about.
Yes, exactly. I think there's a substantial risk of a serial meeting otherwise, or the appearance of one. And it's easily avoided by simply adopting option one. Again, the only downside to that, and it may be less of a downside with somebody like a town administrator who has thick skin, because you have to, is that the comments may not be as candid as we've discussed.
But again, it's not a violation of the open meeting law for a sitting board of selectmen to review an evaluation.
I, I think it may be, because you're then, you're then-
You'll need to show me, then.
Well, I think if you've got two people who've given their input, you know two opinions-
Review, not discuss, review. Not the form-
Will it, I guess, I, I'm concerned with it ending there, Jim.
Okay.
That's, that's my concern.
It's not a violation of the open meeting, that's all I'm saying, Jack.
To simply review it?
Well, and that's all I'm saying. I don't want to get in a back and forth, and I'm not, you're a lot smarter than I am in regards to open meeting laws, for sure. And, and I, you know, just to answer Paul's question, that's all, that's all.
And Paul definitely will want to look at it. I know that.
He's, he's a bit, it's-
You said that pretty clearly, okay. There's no question about it.
If you think you want to look at it later, you should look at it upfront and be part of option one.
And, and you know the baggage I'm coming with.
I get it, I know exactly what you're coming from, ask a little-
And what I've described this evening is how we did on the school committee, which doesn't mean that's the way we should do it here.
Sure.
It's just something I know. It's worked for the last eight years, that I was on the committee the previous to that also. So that's all I am with there. I'm certainly open to, you know, discussing it further, having you very, really persuade me otherwise.
I'm okay with one, too, to be quite honest with you.
No, you say it.
Well, no, I, I never said I was a postal.
You was never not, okay.
I've never said I was a postal.
And, and one is commonly used, not just in your community.
But is the industry standard for your, where multiple member boards is the appointing authority?
I mean, the, the concerns brought up in this discussion are very valid, for sure, is to the candor on a two-way discussion. And I've always thought extraordinary when some folks actually criticize public officials or your employees more than the elected officials, because this is what we take on. But it's open, and who in industry, private industry, would like their jacket opened, so that the whole public can see what they did or do not do, and how well they perform. It does require extraordinarily thick skin, well done.
Well, it does. And although we, we don't have to go in front, we don't have to go in front of the voters every three years, so, so that's a thick skin, too. And the other, the other thing we have here is we have the guidance document already in place about the review process. And we talked about consistency and stuff like that. It's all spelled out. Here's the menu, and really, whatever you choose is great, just so long as these are the four distinct menus.
And they're forward.
Pick the one you want, and, and the other appoint, multiple member boards will pick the ones that work for them. We just keep them folks out of trouble.
I kind of took that right turn. So it's, it's up to each individual, multi-member board.
Member board who's an appointing authority to decide which option they want to do.
So it's not something this board designates for the, unless we-
No, no, but what we're ensuring-
You would pick your own for yourself, for your own.
Right, you'd pick your own. But what we, but what we wanted to do is to, is to provide a menu so that all those who do get to pick know distinctly what the options are that are-
And where they're going to feel more, most comfortable, you know, in, in doing a review.
So a discussion for another day.
This is worth a lot of discussion another day.
You know, generally, you know, if you, you know, talk to any employee, one of the, I would say, hair-raising times of their, you know, year's service is performance review time. Okay? This, it's, it's generally a less desirable day happening during that week, okay? And I think that should be at least, you know, kind of understanding, what is it going to, we want to get a good dialogue going with this employee, we want a, a, you know, a filled discussion, a real discussion, you know, back and forth. Is it going to occur at a full public meeting that's been posted in all, you know, we've outlined what needs to be done for that public meeting? You know, i- is it going to give you the richest, you know, return? And, you know, and if you're going to say yes to that, fine, you know, here are the steps you take. And, you know, stay within those bounds, and it's not going to be a problem.
And the way to mitigate or ameliorate whether or not that's the worst of 365 days out of the year for the employee is that no surprises occur that day.
Right.
The employee is fully apprised as an ongoing process where he or she stands with the appointing official, officials, board, whatever, so.
Well, ideally, yes.
Ideally, yes.
I, I agree wholeheartedly, and-
We've all failed to acknowledge that one thing or another, yes, so.
And it's not just a difficult day for the employee, it's also a difficult day for most managers that have to say, all right, we're going to do your review today. That's, they're, you know, even trained in doing it, they're not always comfortable with it.
No, it's, it's a- Okay, that's what we're trying to do. We, we, we're trying to get, you know, some of the constrictures out of it, so that, at least the legality out of it, and, you know, here are options that you can use. So we've introduced it tonight, and, you know, there's a lot of time for some thinking.
Now, similarly, if our chiefs had an opportunity to review this one?
Have you seen this one yet?
Yes. Yeah.
Doesn't really affect them.
What I mean, that's the question.
We, for quite some time, have had the review process in place, which department heads would use. And that's what, I'm assuming, they've been working on it for a while. So this isn't, this isn't really-
Well, except that-
Question asked and answered.
Well, yeah, they had, they had looked at it, and they, they recognized that they are- It affects them because they're potentially receiving it. Right, that's, that's right. But a lot of discussions have all just started. So can we vote, can we agree to vote to receive this tonight?
I got no problem. Move that the board of, I'm sorry?
No, no.
You okay?
Yep.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to receive the proposed policy guidance document on performance reviews of employees of multiple member town boards, as recommended by the personnel board, and to schedule the adoption of said policy and procedures for the board of selectmen's next regular meeting on December 1st, 2014.
Senator?
Move in second, I was in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
You as well.
Do you get to the Antucket much?
I went only twice this past summer.
Oh, really? Okay. I go there all, my daughter moved there.
Keith ramble eats at Antucket from time to time.
Go there all the time.
Oh, nice.
She's the museum director at the Antucket Lightship Museum. She's just got that job. Well, maybe I'll see you out at Christmas roll.
I'll be there for that, but we should let each other know.
Okay, very good.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't have to recap the budget, that was just a fill art.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we can, we can nix number four.
We, we can discuss the budget next meeting, for sure.
If we're on to, what, the minutes?
No minutes.
No minutes.
Only seconds.
Probably a bit, but-
So I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move this second before-
Nine o'clock.
Before we do so, I, I do-
What?
I do want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, because we will meet until then. Move this second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Happy-
Thank you for watching.
Thanksgiving.
Thank you.